So we will, welcome. Okay, this will constitute the meeting of the zoning
Thank you, Tim.
Zoning Board of Appeals, it's Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, at 7:32 PM, a virtual meeting via a Zoom platform. So, present as the Board of Appeals are, I'll start at least on my screen, left to right, Peter Gerdicke, Vice Chair, myself, Woody Chidick, Jen Orem, Clerk, David McMorris, Matt Watkins, Lee Darst, and Charles Higgins, who's the third regular member of our board. So, we have as a first agenda item, update on plans for continued meeting. Jen, do you want to address that?
Yes, so right now, we're going to be still planning, because offices, et cetera, are going to be working through the phases at 25%. There's no plan at this point to have public meetings. That could change as we discuss the phased openings. And like Peter said at one point, we would probably be able to have one and say it will cook comments, but that hasn't been okayed by the Board of Health and or anything at this point. So, this will be the forum until they decide to let us do that. In July, we do have three new public hearings. And so, that'll be, and one of them's big. So I will have, I will have paper packets for you all on this one, because it's the Coasette Harbor Inn. And I want to make sure that you have the packet for that. So in that case, I'll just give you paper packets for all three applications. And they'll be available well in advance, as I already have two of them. And basically, what, you know, we'll just keep you updated when we meet with emergency management as when to we can hopefully have meetings together. But I don't foresee it happening, honestly, through the summer.
I'm sorry, would you repeat the last sentence?
Until we get everything, where, I don't foresee us having meetings in a room together
I see.
Until the fall. That would be my guess. So right now, the next two meeting dates are July 7th and August 4th. I know it's summer, but I just wondered if you could pencil that in. At least we can all do it from the comfort of our home. So that'll be good. And then this meeting this evening, we do have attendees that I can promote to panelists as we go through. So if we want to go through the decisions and see if you have any, I know we've had some new submissions, and we do have some people here to discuss and answer any questions you may have. And then we can close them, go through, close them all, and then go to the decisions. And I have emailed the decisions to Lauren, but I don't know, it'll depend on our computers if we can pull them up. Does that sound good?
It was good to me. How about the rest of the board?
Yep, that's good.
I'm all set. I got everything printed.
All right.
Okay. All right. So, let me just reiterate one thing Jen said, that we have two meetings coming up, July 7 and August 4. Does anybody have any reason at this point to doubt or question whether they can make those two virtual meetings? I mean.
I can make July at some point, but probably not as early as the 4th. In August, I'm going to try to go west.
Okay, Oregon or California, what?
Well, California, not California, for sure. Oregon and/or Washington.
Okay.
Sorry, there'll be no vacations.
But, you know, you can, you can go, but you can't go very far with the benefits of Zoom, so.
Right, I can, I can almost certainly make the meeting.
Oh, great. Well, that's, that's what's critical. Okay.
But it may be, well, we'll take that up when as an F.
Alrighty. Okay, well, let's jump into, we've continued five hearings, primarily for submissions since the last meeting in May. And the first hearing is 449 and 457 Jerusalem Road, by attorney Jeff DeLeese, on behalf of his clients, John Starbush, Shelley VanderWiel. Because, as Peter noted, in his draft decision, that my daughter and son-in-law are, have assumed the role of architects, I'm recuse, recusing myself. So I'll turn it over to Peter Gerdicke to conduct this hearing.
All right. And I have, I have promoted Jeff, John Karaki, and John Caravanero as panelists to participate.
All right. But at the moment, we did not ask for anything else from them. If somebody has something to request from them, or a question for them, I would entertain a motion to, to close the hearing. Does anybody have a request for the consultants?
Peter, the only thing I had in my notes, but it might have been just a note-taking issue. I was looking through my notes last time, and under this case, I had, had a note, and I think it came from you, that it said we needed just the application to have the right information on it. But I don't know if you recall that at all.
I don't, I think that, I have that, but I think that was a different hearing.
They have it in the other one, too, that we did get it for. But for some reason, I had this in my notes for this one, too. So I just figured it out.
I don't remember seeking anything for this one. Does anybody else remember that? Jen, do you have a note to that effect?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Could I, could I have a motion?
Charlie Higgins, and I move we close the meeting. Are they hearing?
A second.
Matt Watkins, I'll second.
All right, all in favor. We'll take a roll call. David McMorris?
Hi.
Charlie Higgins?
Hi.
Matt Watkins?
Hi.
Lee Darst?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. The hearing is closed. Woody, the floor is yours.
Okay, the second hearing has to do with 103 Black Rock Road, filed by Pierce Home Design. And the applicant, this is the one where the applicant is seeking to construct a second-story addition. Since our last meeting, as recently as today, we got a revised application, Section 8 of our application. There were a lot of statistical errors, and those have since been corrected. None of them are brand-new, in my estimation. We had discussed those at a previous hearing or two, but the application was in error, and they've corrected that. We also have received a, an amended site plan showing a stone trench at the, I would say, the southwest corner of the lot, which is where the proposed sump pump is going to discharge water, taking it away from the street and away from one of the butters downhill. So with, those were two new submissions. I assume people were able to see those. I, being the author of the decision, there, there's no news in terms of the, of the statistics. But would you like to discuss those, or the site plan is amended? I think, Jen, that's, those are the two changes that have come in.
Yes, there was a change. There was a drainage plan added to the site plan. In addition, there's a letter from the conservation agent going over what could be done. And I, and said that an administrative review could be done. And then just the changes. So there's just those three items. I just want to make sure that there's any Q and A.
Right.
I don't, I don't see.
Is there anybody out there in cyberspace?
I do not see anybody in cyberspace.
Board, do you have any questions about the submissions that we received?
I do not.
I do not.
No.
Okay. Well, then, in that case, I would move that we close the hearing at, on 103 Black Rock Road.
Oh.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, the Baker family has a question.
The Baker family on this, on this particular?
I don't know why, but we've promoted them, so we can see what they would.
The Bakers are before us, but not on this one. It's all right.
It's a different Baker family.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay.
Shoot. Go ahead.
Go ahead and ask the question, Baker family. Would the Baker family like to ask a question regarding 103 Black Rock Road?
So Kristen and Brian Baker had no questions.
Okay.
Okay, well, note your presence.
Jerusalem Road Baker.
All right.
Nor the Nichols Road Baker.
There's a lot of Bakers. There are several.
Okay, so I would, my motion still stands to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
Isn't there a question?
No.
What?
Oh, there's a question now?
There is a question.
Doug, it's from one, oh, so Katie Dugans to some, and the both Dugans are letting us know that they are present. So the board is moving to close this hearing.
But the hearing is, is still open. It hasn't been voted to close. Dugans, do you have comments or questions?
I don't, no comment from Mr. Duke.
All right, so I moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Woody Chidick, aye.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
All right.
David McMorris, aye.
Lee and Matt?
Lee Darst, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
And Pete?
Peter Gerdicke, aye.
Okay, moved and seconded. Let's move to the third hearing, filed by Whitney Winery, on behalf of her clients, David and Angela Abadi. They seek to raise and reconstruct a single-family home and came before us. It appeared at the, at the first hearing, or the first session of our hearing, that they would need considerable relief. But at their request, this has been continued a couple of times. And Ms. Winery, who's their architect, her, their architect has come up with a plan that I believe, and we can deliberate that, but I believe really obviates the need for any zoning relief, because the proposal is to move the proposed house back out of the setbacks. And anyway, we can deliberate on this, but I don't know if the, I don't know the date of the latest submission. Do you know, Jen? But I believe it's came in since the last hearing.
Yes, it came in last week.
Yeah.
And they are here before the board to explain why they don't need relief and requesting to withdraw it before any decision or deliberation.
Okay, well, Whitney, would you mind giving us a little thumbnail sketch?
Sure, yeah. Prior, we had been wanting to keep part of the old house or rebuild in the old site. But when it became clear, we had to fully rebuild, and make some changes. It was clear from our meeting that we, like, we narrowed it. We lowered it from the street a little bit, so it's actually not level with the street anymore. The first floor goes down. But because of the setback, that's possible. So we, we meet all of the requirements now, for height and for setbacks.
Yeah, I mean, just parenthetically, I didn't think you'd be able to do that. But you did.
I didn't either. It took a lot of, yeah, but we got there. Yes.
Pete?
I'm sorry, but the site plan, as it came to us, is very small. So it's hard to read. But I'm looking at the side setback that is furthest from North Main Street, the further from North Main Street. And if I'm reading right, it looks like it still clips the corner of the revised location. Perhaps, perhaps I'm not reading it right, but perhaps you could talk about that.
Of course. So the part that goes beyond the 20-foot setback is still within the 15-foot setback. It is just a covered porch. It's under the 15-foot height. And the code in that area, as I read it, says that under 15 feet, you can be within the 15 feet. So it's not actually built, it's not even built structure, or it's not built occupiable space. It's exterior porch.
So that's a, if we look at this, at the drawing that has all the little bitty elevations on it, little bitty elevations, the corner we would be looking at, there is
Let me zoom out.
The north, the north view corner?
Yeah, so it's the third picture on the top.
Yes. So that's a covered porch, right there?
That's a covered, yeah, it's just a.
And then the porch is, is large enough that by the time it stepped back to the sidewall of that house there, or the corner sidewall, it's beyond the 20-foot?
The occupiable space, yes, it is. Yeah, so that, that corner that you see that has a window in it, that's at 20.9, back from the.
Other questions for Ms. Winery?
Charlie Higgins, I was wondering, looking at that site plan, the coverage, it's a larger house, the coverage is going up only 2%. Does that include the swimming pool, the larger driveway, the front entrance way, the retaining walls?
So the thing is, actually, it's a significantly smaller driveway. It's probably about half, because the driveway goes way into the backyard right now and flares out. And we're keeping it in the front. So, yeah, that is, that is including sidewalks, it includes the pool, it includes the decks. So the, the house prior, very small, but it had a lot of decks and a lot of patios, and enormous driveway. So we just tightened everything up into one spot instead of covering a lot.
Other questions, comments? Yeah, I mean, to my mind, I mean, unless I'm missing something here, and Peter's point, it's a little hard to read, given the shrinkage. But nevertheless, it appears that no zoning relief is probably going to be needed. We can deliberate on that coming up. But I don't see any red flags here, myself.
I would just recommend you leave the meeting open, so we can withdraw it, instead of closing it.
Okay. You, leave it open, continue it, or just leave it open? Just not?
I would just leave it open. And if, you know, and just if you want to discuss it at the end, before you go into deliberation, to determine if you're going to let them withdraw it. I mean, I wouldn't risk closing it, because that closes the hearing. I'd rather just withdraw it. And then I have paperwork that I will file.
Okay.
It's, the, the language is withdraw prior to any decision or dribble or decision being made. So I'd rather not close the hearing, giving it an end. I think it's just more technicality, but just think it'll be safer.
Okay, that's all right with me. Everybody else? Good, we will just leave this open and move on to the next item, which is 706 Jerusalem Road, by Alyssa Jones Design, on behalf of her client, William and Kristen Baker. They would like to construct a second-story addition, a portion of which is within the setback. And I don't recall, what, Jen, have we received anything new since May on this one?
We have not.
So, folks, questions of the applicants, or, or the designer, or are we good to close this and return in a few minutes to deliberate? Bakers, would you like to have any, do you have anything to add? Oops, okay.
No, nothing new, but thank you.
Um, yeah, nothing new on my end.
Okay, do appreciate all the statistics you provided at the last hearing. Thanks. Okay, well, I would again, move to close this hearing at 706 Jerusalem Road.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay, give your names, just because it's being recorded. Lee Darst, I mean, you're kind of obvious. All right, Woody Chidick, aye?
Charlie Higgins, aye.
David McMorris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay. All right, well, that would close the hearing, and we'll move into deliberations very shortly. The last here, sorry, the last of our five hearings is 88B Beach Street. It's a dock, special permit requested by Donald and Elise Ryan. And what else, what have we received on this one, Jen? Anything?
We have not received anything on this.
But do we have any questions of the Ryans? Or Kevin, I don't know if Kevin or Consulting is here, but.
He, I believe he's in, he is here. I'll promote to a panelist.
Does the board have questions, either of the applicant or the engineer in sight?
Hi, good evening.
John, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. Thanks for having me on. I did want to report that we had our first and final conservation hearing last Thursday night, and the commission voted to issue an order of conditions for this project.
Very good.
Okay. Very good. Questions, board?
No.
Nope.
All right, well, then again, I would move that we close the hearing on 88B Beach Street.
Second, Peter.
All right, Woody Chidick, aye.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
David McMorris, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Peter, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, let's move into the deliberation phase. The Starbush VanderWiel proposal, of which I am recused. And again, turn it over to Peter Gerdicke.
Okay, I drew the long straw, or the short straw, as it may be, with respect to writing this up. So I think everybody got my draft decision yesterday. And I could walk through it if people want. The decision was a compound decision, because there was relief sought for both floodplain and 8.7B. It felt to me, taking the 8.7B first, that we had a technical issue in essence, because we were doing construction. Oops, what's going on here? Hello?
Peter, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I just, I am able to share my screen, and I was able to transfer the files over, so I can share the decision. I just need to know the address, if you would mind.
Oh, sure, this is a 449 Jerusalem Road, or 457.
Thank you, I'll get that on the screen in a moment. Sorry for the interruption.
I'm, I'm not sure the technology is a help here, but we'll see.
David had asked that the decision be placed on the screens. If people don't want that, we don't have to do it.
We better take that off. That's, that's the old markup version. That's not gonna.
Okay, so we won't do decisions on the screen, then?
You can do that one. That's the underlying markup from a couple of previous decisions, and it won't be helpful. Does everybody, has everybody been able to read it?
Yes.
All right, on the 8.7, we have construction that will happen in the front setback. However, we have existing improvements on, at 457, that were practically right at the street and right at the left side sideline. And now we have nothing in the left side, and we have tripled the distance back from the front on Jerusalem. We have a little more facade than we did before in the setback, but a much smaller visual mass overall. So, in my opinion, rather than being substantially detrimental, the, the proposed improvements with the new garage are actually distinctly beneficial. So I don't have a problem with the 8.7. The 9.7 was almost equally technical, in the sense that it's at the extreme rear of the property. It's above the 10-foot line, and the construction is effectively riprap, and some utility modifications, drainage modifications. So I didn't have any trouble finding that, under the five criteria with respect to the improvements, that there was no issue meeting the tests. So overall, my conclusion was that we should issue the special permit. And it just took a lot, a lot of verbiage in paper to go through all of the, all of the stuff. But that's where I came out.
Yeah, Peter, I don't know if we're, if everyone had a chance, if we need to pause at all. But I did review it. I think your comments are appropriate. I agree with what you had to say. I thought it was a good decision. That's my take on it.
Okay, I guess I should poll people here, because of the nature of the Zoom. And I'll do it in the order that people appear on my screen, rather than the house. And that would put David up next.
I thought it was well organized, well laid out, well stated, and well funded.
Thank you. Charlie, your thoughts?
I agree with the decision. Charlie Higgins.
Lee?
I agree with the decision. I think it was very well written and clear.
I wasn't fishing for compliments, but thank you anyway. So I guess I would, whoop, do we have comments, Jen?
I just had one edit, just to grab. This on the page two, second paragraph, from the minimum setbacks. It says 55 feet, I think it's 30.
Page two, where?
The second paragraph, what minimum required front setbacks are, and it says 55 feet.
Not, oh, front, front setback? Oh, okay. If it does, then that's a good catch.
A little birdie told me that.
We'll have to figure out who the birdie was. Then, I guess, there'd be, is there any further discussion? If not, then perhaps we could have a motion to accept the decision?
Oh, moved.
Is there something? That was Dave McMorris. Is there a second?
Charlie Higgins, second.
All right. All those in favor, I'll poll people by the voter in the screen. Dave McMorris?
Aye.
Matt Watkins?
Aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Charlie Higgins?
Aye.
Okay, over to you, Woody.
Okay, well, I've drafted.
Okay, well, I've drafted a decision on 103 Black Rock Road. There were, it seemed to me, three or four issues. The application was to essentially raise, rebuild, expand vertically a house, a goodly portion of which is within the setbacks, front and rear. We had three or four issues that came up, in no particular order. One of the early issues was a very legitimate question by, by some neighbors, the Dugans, in terms of 100 and some odd feet, square feet discrepancy between the assessor's records in terms of the lot size and what the Kavanaugh Consulting firm ascertained. I'm satisfied that the evidence we have is that this was never really likely surveyed, set aside as a, as a lot in 1913. It was a pretty accurate estimate within 1.6%, I think, of what the Kavanaugh firm ascertains. But nevertheless, it's still a lot of about 11,000 square feet in a district that requires 35,000. So it's relatively de minimis in terms of a, of a difference. We had an issue, we had a couple of other issues, one of which had to do with habitual flooding of the basement, some pump that would discharge water inside, some of which ran into a neighbor's yard, some of which ran into the Black Rock Road itself. Concern, I think, with a couple of testimonies, that in the winter, that kind of overflow tends to freeze and create a public safety hazard. There was an issue, a concern raised by somebody that the increased height of this structure would cast shadows on their house for a portion of the day. Remind the board that the house itself is only going to be between seven and eight feet higher than it is today. And its neighbors are set back pretty far from this subject property. And the idea of this, let's, let's say, seven-foot height addition casting shadows on, on neighbor's properties is, again, a sort of a de minimis issue, if, if an issue at all. The, the other issue had to do with the fact that going up is always a, an increase in a nonconformity. But I felt that in every respect, both volumetrically and vertically, the increases were in the 40 to 48% range. In other words, you're, in a way doubling the size of the house, but you're only increasing the vertical and the volume by around half that. And it seemed to me that this would be pretty compatible with the neighborhood. It's not large, the highest, and, and I'm apologizing because my printer went on the, on the blink today, so I'm trying to remember what the hell I wrote. But the height is now around 27 feet, the way we measure it. So it's not a tall house, it's not a large house particularly. There is a, an overhang in that courtyard leading into the, onto the concrete patio, but it's surrounded in three sides by a, by a, by the house itself. So it's not going to be visible. And moreover, they are removing a non-conforming deck. And I'm not saying that this is necessarily a one-for-one, but the nonconformity that's being removed is somewhat greater than the nonconformity that's being increased through this overhang. So I basically felt it was compatible with the neighborhood. The addition of that trench that will accept the sump pump discharge, I think is going to benefit people on the road. And I could see very little harm, but fire away with questions.
Oh. I was, I don't have a question. I was happy to see the extra work done on the water discharge. I thought that was a legitimate concern of the neighbors and probably the most troubling thing about the project, and it looks to me like it's resolved.
Yeah, and there was a question at our last hearing as to whether this was within the purview of the zoning board. But I, but again, looking at 8.72, where public safety, you know, is a legitimate concern. And if you look at section 12.4, where again, things like safety and traffic are concerns, I felt it was not a big stretch to, to, to address that, that issue. We have an opportunity to address a, a safety issue at little expense or pain, I think, to the applicant. So I agree with you, but.
I, I, I guess I'm next to David on the screen, the way I'm looking at it anyway. I thought it was a, a spot-on decision and I have no questions.
Okay, I did have a couple of edits from the version you had. One, you know, a couple of the edits were, were just, you know, typos or, or, you know, poor language. In the, under the findings section, I've added, really, I've repeated what section 8.72 says in the bylaw, and then those six or seven findings, and six findings beneath it justify why I think the decision should be to approve. But they, the way I drafted it first, it was just some random findings, and I think they all really fit into addressing the issues embedded in 8.72. Nothing material, but.
Yeah, Woody, for what it's worth, I, yeah, I, I agree with your explanation. I, I think, you know, you did, did a good job of explaining the rationale and kind of how we got there. I agree with David that the drainage piece of it was an important concern, so it's happy to see that addressed and overall, in agreement with the decision.
Yeah, and I, and I know that the applicants would intend it originally to, as I mentioned in the decision, to, to keep the, much of the first floor, you know, walls and, and the structure. But I, I think as some testimony indicated, the more they've gotten into it, no big surprise, less and less of that original structure is, is worthy of saving. So this is essentially a, a rebuild. Doesn't make it negative, but it is a little less than just an alteration. A little more than.
Little more.
Little more, yes, indeed. Anyway, that's, you know, where I came out. Anybody else have?
Okay. Well, do we have a motion to accept that decision?
I move, we accept the decision as drafted. David?
And, and as amended, and I don't think you've seen that, so.
Yes, as drafted with its latest amendments.
Yeah, it's, I'll have to point them out to you because you probably won't really notice them. Okay, and so Dave is, David McMorris has moved this decision, anybody second? Oh, come on.
I'll second it.
Okay, good man. Okay, all in favor? Let's take it from the top, go ahead, Pete.
Uh, Peter Gerdica, aye.
Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Charlie?
Charlie Higgins, aye.
And Lee?
I'm, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. So five votes in favor, one abstention, no, no negative votes, okay, great. Jen, is this appropriate now to get back into Tenzilussum Road?
Perfect, yes, it's still open and it's up on the agenda, so the board can just decide if they'd like to allow them to withdraw, and I will file the appropriate paperwork.
Jen, what's the procedural? We have to either allow them to withdraw or actually have a, just make a decision and write it up and all of that?
Right, so because there's been, it's, no decision has been made prior to any decision being made, you can vote to allow it to be withdrawn without prejudice. And then I filed paperwork with the clerk's office.
Which we've done before. And in this case?
Yes.
Did they act, we've done it numerous times. In this case, did they actually file a, a request to withdraw and?
They did, they actually sent a letter to do so, and then during all the COVID, with everything happening, we decided, you know, let's, let's make sure that they don't need relief because they've already paid to file, they've already, we've got an open hearing. And what if we find out they need relief, they've already here? So they drew up new plans, got those to us, and Bob reviewed them, Bobby again, and we determined, and then we, and then Woody and I had been speaking and decided, you know, it makes more sense for the board to see the plans, and they too agree that, that no relief is needed. And then it's an appropriate withdrawal, since it's already before the board.
Yeah, and as I said, you know, kind of parenthetically during the, the hearing episode tonight, my first, my first guess was that they weren't going to be able to comply with zoning. It's a very unusual lot, particularly as it drops way off and things, but they have. And so I'm, I'm glad that they took the time to, to comply, frankly, and obviating the need to have them come back and back and back. So I would make a motion to allow the, allow the applicants to withdraw without prejudice.
Charlie Higgins, second.
Okay. Woody Chitikai?
Lee Darst, aye.
All right, good. That's two.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
Three.
Dave McMorris, aye.
Peter Gerdica, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, great, 6-0 unanimous. The next decision of the next, yeah, the next deliberation actually is at 706 Jerusalem Road, again in 8.7, to construct a second story addition, a portion of which is going to be within the setback. I think, Lee, you wrote this decision, did you?
I did with help because I used a prior decision, so it's sort of, it's co-authored. And I, with Benjamin Lacy, he started it and I, I adapted it. So this, I focused on the, some of the changes that they had made since that time because they've added things, this decision specifically noted that they had some arborvitae, and they've added a fence. And I changed the, we were provided with the updated height and the updated facades and increases. And we also had since that time, in 2017, one of the, the next door neighbor had sent a letter endorsing it. And that neighbor didn't come forward this time, but the neighbor across the street sent an email endorsing. And it is, there's going to be no, it's, the addition's going to stay all inside the, it's the current setback. It's going to be no, there'll be the additional half-second floor, but it's not going to go any further into the setback than it is right now. So I, as far as 8.72, there's not going to be any substantial, uh, won't be substantially more detrimental than existing.
Yeah, no, I thought it was clear, easy to follow. Other people? Pete?
Um, Lee, I had one suggestion and one question. The suggestion is on the first paragraph of page, second paragraph of page two, the one that starts applicant, applicants propose. We say 2210 high addition beyond this corner. And I wonder if you would consider changing beyond to above or something like that? Because beyond kind of connotes it's going out further into the setback, and I don't think we want to give that impression where all that's happening is it's going up.
Okay, so.
I just changed beyond to above to make it clear.
Okay.
And then in the paragraph that, a couple down from there, that starts, we have also, I, I, I don't, I completely agree with what you're saying, except I'm curious, it says the proposed addition will more than double the nonconforming facade area. And then it says that the existing nonconforming facade is 667, and the proposed additional area is 335. I think that's at odds with the statement of more than doubling. You'd have to be adding, you know, 667 to double it. So I was wondering if you'd consider wording one or the other of those a little differently. But I, I think the conclusion, I, I completely agree with your conclusion that 335 in that neck of the woods on that house is maybe not de minimis, but minor for sure. But maybe we can take out the doubling.
Okay. Okay, yep.
John Kavanaugh went like an A where the E is in his name too, on the first page.
Okay.
Sorry, I was reading.
I might take one more T, I think maybe Ben used to do that, so it might be left over.
Yeah, okay, so that could be possible. As I said, it was co-authored, so I will.
I completely agree with the decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the conclusion too, Lee, look good.
Yeah, me too. I'd make a motion to accept the decision as written. And with, with the suggested edits, yeah.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Woody Chitikai?
Peter Gerdica, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
David McMorris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Great, thank you. We have one last hearing, we also have some, some minutes to go over. But one last deliberation, which has to do with the residential dock at 88B Beach Street. Dave, I guess you, I'm sorry, who did this decision, is this?
I did.
David, Dave, okay, Dave, you want to give us a thumbnail sketch or?
Well, it's almost not even a dock. It's a small landing on a piece of existing land that doesn't require any pilings, doesn't require any alteration of the land. Everything that's going beyond that is either beyond our jurisdiction or being removed seasonally. So it's pretty straightforward, easy decision. We've done it before at Gammons Road. And other than the changing the names to protect the innocent, the Gammons Road decision is pretty much this decision.
Yes?
I did have two edits on it, both editorial. In the, right under the seal on the decision, there's a random stray Z.
Yeah.
And other than that, there's a, in. Okay, here it is. Okay, here it is. On this, probably the second page, under findings, no, under hearing. The first paragraph, under hearing, the second line up from the bottom of the paragraph, extend should be extends, an S instead of an E. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else.
Oh, I see.
David, I think maybe one, one of the only other things might be at the beginning there, we, it says Patriot Ledger, I'm not sure if that is accurate or if it's Coacet Mariner.
It is, I I had to, I did, I did use the Patriot Ledger for that.
Oh, okay.
I'm just curious why, I don't really care, but why Patriot Ledger, not the Mariner?
That was one of the first hearings during the COVID, and they want, and then they wanted to hear, and that was the the timing for using the Coacet Mariner is ridiculous. You have to place it Monday to make it in Friday. Where is Patriot Ledger's daily, you can, you can do it within 24, 48 hours, so more expensive, but that's why.
Well, do we have a motion to accept the decision with a couple of little edits that Dave pointed out?
So moved, Peter.
All right, moved, who would like to second this?
Second it.
Lee, all right, all in favor?
Aye, Lee Darcey.
Okay, Lee.
David McMorris, aye.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
Charlie, and then Woody, okay, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
And Pete? All right, well, that concludes the deliberation section of the tonight's hearing. One thing that occurred to me as I was reading the draft decisions, it is in my decision, and it's in another decision or two. We had that phrase that with like two as-built drawings. But now, this doesn't apply, I don't think, to a dock, but or whatever, but it does apply to structures that are being raised and rebuilt or substantially modified. And I I still would like to include that as sort of a a safety clause that we get kind of as-built plans in the files. Pete?
I'm happy to add that to my decision, and I would also, Jen, if we could hold over for a couple of minutes after this, I had a bunch of blanks in mind for, you know, people's names from from November and the like, because I didn't, I I'm separated from my files before January.
Okay.
So I've got a couple of things I'd like to, we can do it on the phone tomorrow or whatever, but there's some blanks that need to get filled in, and I want to give.
Okay, that's not a problem at all.
They weren't germane to the thought process, but there also was a neighbor in November, I believe, at the first hearing, whose name I didn't get, and I didn't have the minutes on that, so I left a sort of a space there. It doesn't, it didn't affect my thought process, but I'm, I'd like to fill those in, and I'm happy to have you add Woody's language about the the two set of as-bills.
Sure, no, I could pull that from the November minutes, and because I know, I remember that, I met with that neighbor in the office as well, so we can pull that, so I can look at it, I'm going to be getting in tomorrow, I have a couple of calls at home tomorrow morning, and then I'll be in the office, so we can do it together, or I could just take a peek, because I would like to file them Wednesday and Thursday, since I have, so I'll take, we can, I'll make the changes, and then we, I'll call you.
Perfect.
All right.
Okay, well, I think the last, least scheduled topic, our minutes approval for April and May.
And thank you, Matt Watkins, for reading them. A gets a star.
I heard some edits for May's, I I don't think anybody should have spent any time with Aprils, because all we did was.
That was a pretty quick.
Move stuff around. I have about five or six, and they're not substantive at all, and I'd be happy to give them to you tomorrow, Jen, when we talk about the other stuff.
That's perfect, that'd be great, it'd be great than not going through them.
Would like to hear them, I'm happy to give them tonight, but.
I think over the phone would be great.
Okay.
Okay, how about others in terms of April, of May, in terms of May? And these, these really just kind of hot off the press, aren't they, Jen?
They are, yes, because I love you all, I stayed up here until, you would think you have more time to do minutes working part-time at home, but having to operate virtually and going in, I feel like I'm working more than ever, to be honest. So I stayed last night and sat in this office until I finished. So sorry, they're hot off the presses, but I figure we read the decisions last, in the last few days, we can do the minutes, too, so. So, yes, they're hot off the presses, and I thank you all for taking the time to read them. Matt sent me some edits as well, and he was going to give me.
Do we have anything beyond, let's say, grammatical edits and things of that sort? Anything of substance or?
Well, I wouldn't consider any of mine of substance. There, for clarity, in several places, and a couple of grammaticals and a typo or two. And I don't think there's anything that affects the context other than potentially making it slightly clearer.
Yeah, mine were parallel with Peter said, so. So, yeah, I would, if everyone's okay with it, I would make a motion that we accept the April meeting minutes as written, and the May meeting minutes as edited.
Okay, that's been, motion's been made?
Seconded.
Okay, and seconded by Dave McMorris, all in favor? Any discussion? Otherwise, Woody Chitik, aye?
Lee Darcey, aye.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
David McMorris, aye.
Peter Gertica, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
I I have a kind of a sinking feeling that the good times are coming to an end, at least in terms of zoning board meetings. I mean, here's us, another meeting that is concluding just about one hour long, which we're not used to having, but Jen, you said there are some beyond the harbor, are there any other tricky things coming before us? It's, I'd say the load's been a little light.
Right, so, well, we have the Coacet Harbor Inn, which is coming, which is actually two properties, 124 and 87, and then a dock, but I don't have the applications. And I thought I was getting another filing, and I'm thinking about it now, I don't think it's in, so I have to, I'll go in tomorrow and file these decisions and get the notices out as many as I can tomorrow and Thursday, and then I can send you an update, but I'd have to look, I thought there was another one, but I have planning tomorrow night, so my brain is kind of mushed, you know.
Okay.
But I will keep you all posted, and I'm going to make sure that you all get paper on these as well. Peter?
My question is, with respect to the Harbor Inn, who has jurisdiction over what?
They're coming to you for Wetlands, section nine. The rest of it falls to the planning board, it's a harbor business, village business, district overlay, and site plan review.
That was my, that was my impression, that we really will have a very minor role in this one. We're going to end up seeing the plans, but we're going to end up just expressing an opinion on the flood protection watershed, okay.
Yes. That is all.
If anyone wants to have a more substantive role, I'll write you in for the planning board.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is anybody conducting a write-in campaign? They're, they've, like, got two slots open, one of.
So.
So, yeah, what's going on on the planning board?
So we have one full member open, and that was Brian Fraser's seat, he is not running again. And then we have a member that pulled papers for Board of Selectmen, but the problem is nobody returned papers for anything prior to COVID, and so we have a lot of write-in campaigns. So what would happen is if Paul Collieri, who is the associate member now, if he did a write-in for the full, then we can appoint an associate at a later date, but we still will be down, it's so confusing, because Paul Grady, who's on the board, pulled for selectmen, and he might be doing a write-in, Diane Kennedy's doing a write-in, because she didn't get her papers back before they shut everything down. It's kind of a conundrum, so I don't know, but it's going to be, it's going to be a hard election totality for the for the clerk, but she has a lot of great people helping her, and, you know, this this whole pandemic just turned everybody on their heads, and as far as the election, but everything else, they're doing a great job getting everything done, as far as voting, et cetera.
One of the issues, I think, in the planning board is that, do they have a supermajority in all cases or some cases?
Just just some, special permit is has to be a supermajority. So this, they, so when we, what we will do is plan out, we'll have a full calendar of when we will hear this particular application, and confirm that we have everybody for the supermajority for that day. So Lauren has already written out a calendar, and then we have Karas coming, Karas will probably come to our hearing on July 7th, just so that for continuity, since she'll also be attending the planning board. You know, she'll just be here just so that she can hear both sides, if she's going to be counsel on the special permit and the village business, so. That's all I have.
Is there any update on the snack bar at the beach? Might assume it's not open, but.
No, I haven't heard anything more, no, I heard that they were eating a limited menu if they were, because it's to-go, but I don't know, I haven't heard anything about the case.
Okay.
I imagine the land court is, again, like everything else, slowed way down in terms of their ability to process.
No.
So. Well, five years later, Lee?
Well, our our amendment, isn't there a zoning amendment on for the town meeting?
No, they had a streamlined town meeting, so it went to, because they had to change the date, and then they have to, a lot of towns are just only passing the operating budget and capital budget items, and, but we actually have 22 or 24, but we did, the planning board did streamline and only do a couple of items to narrow down the scope of the town meeting.
Okay.
Any other issues that the board has or questions I'd like to ask between now and July 7th, or whenever it is?
But definitely call me anytime I have the planning board phone forward to me when I'm not in the office, I'm always on email, so it doesn't have to be zoning related, just shoot me email if you have any questions, and I will get back to you pretty darn quick.
Okay, that's great, well.
Motion to adjourn, Woody.
Let's make a motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn. But I need a little support, okay, Lee, thank you. Woody Chitik, aye?
Lee Darcey.
All right.
Matt Watkins.
Okay.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
David McMorris, aye.
Peter Gertica, aye.
All right, so six to zero, we're adjourned, and talk to everybody, if not, well, most likely not until July.
All right, but I'll look for all your opinions and get those filed for you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
And you call me tomorrow.
Call you tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Bye-bye.
Been absolutely painless.
Stay safe. Stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.